Okay. All set?
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Jones, ready? Carol?
I'm ready.
All right, thank you. Can you have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, and remember to say where you are attending from, your location.
Oh, yes, and also we do have, yes, so everybody if you can remember to give your location, we do have also two new student members joining us tonight, which you may have seen from our, our roll call list there, so Stuart, I believe it's Bovitch, I may pronounce that wrong, and Isabella Malik?
Yeah.
Okay, hey, that nice, thank you, and Stuart, did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, all right, well, thank you guys for joining us. I know that Michelle will have a, an orientation, I think, within a week or two, something she'll be setting that up, so and hopefully I can join you with that as well, to give you kind of a little bit of background in our role here, so, but hopefully can get at least some information from tonight, and welcome aboard. Okay, so with that, welcoming student members, Carol, can you have a roll call, please?
Yes. Okay, Matt Kowalski.
President from the city of Dexter.
Tom Phillips.
President from the city of Dexter.
Jim Carty.
President from the road in McComb County.
What road?
I ninety-four.
Okay, well, I just put you in McComb County, Michigan. How's that? Allison Healy.
President in the city of Dexter.
Chat Hill.
President, reporting in from Phoenix, Arizona. Hot Phoenix, Arizona.
Okay, Kyle Marsh.
Yep, present from the city of Dexter.
Karen Roberts.
Present from the city of Dexter.
While Louise Hubbard.
President from the city Dexter.
And we know that Dustin is absent this evening, two students, and Isabella is a, Isabella is a pro at this, Isabella and Alec.
Um, present from Washington DC.
Wow. And Stuart Bovitch.
Present from the city of Dexter.
Very good.
Awesome, great, all right, we definitely have a quorum. All right, rolling on the, next on the agenda, the action on the minutes, from the June seventh meeting, if we can have someone move the minutes, please? Move Roberts? There's support.
For.
Support Hill, um, okay, so are there any changes, additions, corrections to the minutes as posted?
I, I think there's, well, Kyle Marsh, I can't see, my, all my email went away, so I'm kind of roaming around. But I know that somewhere we showed Kyle is both present and voting R. Let me see if I can find it.
Oh, absent, he, he's listed on the minutes as absent, and then listed as voting under the agenda, and I think that's because he was late. Kyle, were you late at the last meeting?
That's probably a good chance of that, yeah.
I'll fix that.
Okay, thank you.
Good catch, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I believe we can do, just a regular voice vote on this, all in favor of the minutes?
No, 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 no.
Forgot, I'm rusty, sorry, okay, Carol, can you please have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, we can. Carty.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Healy.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes. Hey, thank you, the minutes are approved. Next up, approval of the agenda, item three. Can we have someone move the agenda, please? Seeing Roberts move the agenda, do we have support?
Of support.
Support Hill, any changes to the agenda as posted? Seeing any hands raised, okay, Carol, can we have a vote on the agenda, please?
Okay, there's one thing, agenda, it says proposed business for July sixth, I think, August.
Oh, yeah, that should be Monday, August.
Yeah, second, I think.
Whatever day.
August second, good catch, thank you.
Okay, I assume is that a friendly amendment? Okay, all right, um, okay, so any other changes to the agenda? Seeing any other hands, okay, can we have a vote on the agenda, please?
Okay, Hubbard.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Carty.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Healy.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes, okay, agenda is approved. Next up, item four, public hearings, we have not, no public hearing scheduled for tonight, so we, along the pre-arranged citizen participation, item five, we have no pre-arranged citizen participation, so next up is non-arranged citizen participation, so anybody maybe on the line that would like to raise your hand and address the commission, you may do so, you got five minutes or ten minutes if you represent a group, so at this time, if you would like to raise your hand, if you are on the phone.
Nobody raised their hand, and no star nine, Matt.
Okay, perfect, thank you, all right, so we're rolling on to item, I guess we're on to item seven already, reports of officers, chairman report, I just, I apologize again for missing last, last month, and hopefully I'm trying to get a better handle on how I schedule my council meetings, sometimes I don't, for, for my main day job, sometimes I don't have that ability, but I try to be here for every meeting, so, I do apologize about missing those, and sometimes things get moved around at the last minute. Also, one item, though, I know wasn't on the agenda tonight, which I know we're about this time of the year, are the election of officers, but I think maybe we could put that on the August agenda, but I do want to put it out there for people to start thinking, if, if you do, I mean, if anybody is, again, obviously, is myself being chair, I, if anybody would like to be chair, if there's some position, I mean, if anybody would like to discuss anything, please either reach out to me independently, now's kind of the time to start thinking about this. Also, as you know, obviously, Tom Phillips is vice chair, we do have a secretary position that's open, so if anybody's really, really itching to get on this, the important position of secretary, now's the time, you work your way up. Tom gets knocked off, and I get knocked off, you're the chair, so just kind of think about that.
That could happen.
You never know, that's why Tom and I cannot be in the same place at once, so, you know?
It's secretary, it's secretary is the position, not receptionist, so we gotta.
That's true. So, except, so everybody is eligible, except for, of course, the student reps, and Wa is not eligible being a council, council rep, so, anyway, so putting out there, we'll put that on the agenda for the August meeting, so if anybody, again, wants to discuss anything, please either reach out to myself or Michelle, and keep in mind, the secretary position is open, so we will need a nomination for that. Okay, so that, that's my brief chairman report. Any other planning commissioners, if you want to raise your hand, does anybody else have anything they would like to share, and then, you can go to council if. See any, am I else raising their hand?
I guess I have one quick item regarding the Avalon Housing Project, I went by there, and it looked like they had changed the elevations, I think we talked about it in last meeting, so I don't know when it's appropriate to bring it up, that, I think that needs to be reviewed as to whether our site plan approval is still valid.
It's still.
I, you and Kyle had mentioned to me at the last subcommittee meeting that you were concerned about the windows being smaller than what was approved, everything is being built as was approved. I did check it out.
Because they look kind of like casement windows instead of double hungs, which allows you.
I will double check, I checked for size, I'm sorry. I thought you had mentioned the size.
Yeah, my, my principal concern is the size, whether they cheaped out on them, but.
Nope, size was accurate, but I will check the double hung.
I would say, yeah, if they did, it was because they, they switched from a double hung to a casement, and then you can go smaller with those.
Well. Thank you, commissioners.
Permitted by code, I don't know if our approval specifically said double hung, whatever.
But, no, but thank you commissioners for keeping an eye on that stuff, I know Michelle obviously does monitor that, but she can't be everywhere at once, so, thank you guys. So, anything from council, Wa, anything to report?
Uh, yeah, actually, I've got quite a few things, so bear with me as I read some of them this time. I don't love doing, but I'm going to. Well, first of all, we did move forward with the purchase of the city offices, so we voted unanimously, unanimously to execute closing documents on the purchase of that property. We are still having to do one more environmental study, is that what it's called, Michelle?
Yeah, it's the phase two.
But, you know, barring anything out of left field, you know, everything is a go there, so, that's a positive. We also actually finally approved the appointment of a seventh council member, so we, we welcomed Autumn Arab to council, she was previously the chair of ACH, and I think she's gonna be a great addition to council. We scheduled a public hearing to consider a text amendment to the general code of ordinances to regulate it small wireless facilities in the public right away. So we did that for, that'll be on July twenty-sixth. We also approved the resolution setting the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two military and administration fee. We had a public hearing about the budget, and there was nobody there to give us any feedback. And then we also approved appointments for the new student reps to the different boards and commissions, so obviously, you know that, we have two of them here tonight with us, and then lastly, last week, we had a council work session to discuss the filling the city manager vacancy, and while, you know, we don't vote in the work session, we came to the consensus that there seems to be a four-three split in favor of hiring our interim city manager, Justin Breier, so we decided as council, rather than to drag things out, to just move forward, and we will be, at the July twelfth meeting, we will be starting the discussion about presenting him with a contract.
Good work.
Thanks, Bob.
Any, any questions for Wa this time? Thank you, I have a very, very informative report.
Lot of stuff going on.
Okay, moving on, committee reports, I know we have a big committee report coming up on the agenda, but our, I'm losing track of some of our other committees, Arts and Committee, I don't know if we've got reports on those.
I don't think so right now, Matt.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, Chat, Chat might have something.
Oh, no, nothing from ZBA.
Okay, no problem, all right, that works, community development, then we'll go over to Michelle and or Mike, who wants to.
Okay, okay, can you hear me?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, so you've got my report in front of you, and before I just plow into the verbal updates, do you have any questions or comments for me at this time? Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so, in addition to the updates that Wa gave you from council, I wanted to let you know that they did approve the recommendation from your, from the planning commission to approve the ADU ordinance, the new ADU ordinance, they did make one minor change, and they, they changed the, they changed the part on utilities, so that it was all you ADUs must be served by municipal water and municipal sanitary sewer, and then they can, they clarified the rest of that, because it was rather bulky, which is more my fault than yours, so that it's through the connection with the existing service for the principal building, or if that is determined infeasible by the superintendent, a separate service connection, so, does the superintendent of public services will review and make the decision whether it has to be connected to the existing, or if it has to be a new service. That, the notice of adoption went into the paper right away, and this became effective June thirtieth, so everything has been updated on the website. A number of you have physical copies of the zoning ordinance. I need to make sure that I get you all of the updated sections for over the last year or two, so, I'll be sending you emails, because I know some of you may have a physical copy, but you no longer use it, you use everything online, so I don't want to send you a bunch of paper that you don't want, or are not going to use, so I'll send you some emails to figure out who's getting what. Excuse me. You've seen, I hope, the new banner signs on the Waterwell barricades in front of Riverview Cafe and Dexter's Pub, that, I think they look rather nice, but I'm kind of partial to them. I, I hope that you like them too. And let's see, that's about, that's about it right now. Oh, even Annie Boutique opened up between Wits End and the pub, that's where the old Dick's Barber Shop used to be, and Ruby's Makery, so this is a new woman's, women's clothing store, so, juniors misses. I don't think age really matters anymore with clothing, so it, they've got a beautiful setup, the window display, everything just really smacks of traditional downtown, so if you have a chance, go in and say hi, maybe buy something if you want, to wear or to give, how's that? So, that's about it, unless anybody's got any other questions for me.
I, I see Wa has a question.
Yeah, just quickly on that, Michelle, was that the, is that the same business that was supposed to go into Dexter Print and Embroidery, or is this, is it the?
Yes, yes, they were going to go into Dexter Print and Embroidery on Baker Road. We did have a discussion bef, before they signed the lease, that there'd be limited foot traffic, and retail there, that the chances of survival would be challenging. They worked some, they worked through some issues with the interior remodel with the landlord, but in the end, they decided that they, they didn't want to sign the lease. They, they talked to the landlord at eighty-one eighteen Main, signed the lease, and the rest is history.
Let's go, because I was walking downtown, you know, right after the, you know, after it was apparent that that's what was in there, and I, I was happy to see that, because I thought that was sort of a dead thing, so, glad Scott.
Thank you.
I guess I do have a question, Michelle, any new updates on that eighty-one eighty, the Napound canoe livery?
Not yet.
Center, whatever.
Not yet, okay, but I have spoken to, to the applicant slash developer doing thirty seventy-five Baker Road, you may have noticed that there hasn't been a lot of activity lately.
Yeah, it's been slow.
And, and I haven't been down there today, it was supposed to be, the grass and stuff was supposed to be cut over the weekend. They're still planning to move forward, they're just, it's just very slow.
Yeah, they see, because they, they went in fits and start like they were going, and then they kind of slow, and it's kind of slow, but it looked like it.
It's, right now, the, the contractor doing the majority of the work is having to do a lot of it himself, because he's having trouble getting qualified tradespeople, so. It's hard, yeah.
Not an uncommon problem right now.
No, you're right, you're absolutely right.
We're hearing. Okay, any other questions for Michelle? Updates from? All right, guess not then, okay. We have one communication, that was the Scioto Township master plan, the, the, we're putting that out for comment, so I definitely encourage everybody, it's, I haven't really looked through it in depth yet, but I mean, it's an interesting, I mean, obviously, that, that's one of the plans that affects us most directly, significantly, the Sloan property, or what we call the Sloan, I don't know if it's still called that in their master plan, but the Baker Road across from Bloom Gardens, so that, those large parcels there, obviously, that, that's something that kind of directly affect us with links into the village, so, please take a look at that, and then I think maybe, I forgot, Michelle, when were the comments due?
The comments are, well, before we even get, there's a sixty-three day period, we have to get our comments in on or before August twenty-third, but the township wants to meet with us, and I need, I figured that it, that you as chair, Tom as vice chair, would be able to attend this meeting, and they needed to know if the planning commission wanted a third representative.
Would somebody, so, yeah, I definitely would be interested, I, you had this time, so I think myself and Tom, so, is, is there anyone else interested that would like to join the, I assume it's going to be virtual?
It may be an in-person.
I mean, doesn't matter, but.
Yeah, probably at the township hall next week or the following week, the week of the, the twenty, either the twentieth, twenty.
Date in there.
Yeah, twentieth or the twenty-third.
Okay, so Zach, Kyle, are you raising your hand to be included in that?
Yeah, as long as there's nobody else, I mean.
Okay.
So here's the, the date, July twentieth at noon, at the Scioto Township Hall.
Yes.
Is that something that Matt and Tom can, and Kyle can attend?
I'm, I'm free.
Yeah, I can do that, okay. Yes, thank you, and I, I'm sure Michelle will send us out another little invite there, so, okay, great, so July twentieth, we will, but, but, so again, in the meantime, though, any other planning commissioners, please take your time, look at the, look at that master plan when you get a chance. Okay, so, moving on, old business. All right, the zoning ordinance update from the subcommittee, there's a lot of information, so we have Michelle sent us, you know, great, a link to the video recordings, as well as the information we have in our packet, so, wow, you guys really, there's a lot of information, so, I think, actually, though, I'll look to see, I, Michelle, were you, was this Megan, or, it's like Megan, yeah, because she turned her?
Yes.
So, and I don't know if you wanted to, if you had a plan kind of of how to go through, if you want to touch kind of on the highlight, I mean, there's a lot of information that's changed, I'm not sure if everybody has had time over the weekend, the kind of process, but I do appreciate, I mean, we, it, and again, this is a time for us as a planning commission to be looking at these things, I mean, we, we are going to have another chance, of course, this is a subcommittee, but we want to make sure in general that they're not necessarily going in a direction that we are completely upset with, but we will have opportunities as a whole commission to look through some of these things, so, kind of with that, though, with, I'm not sure if, how Megan, if you, if you had a kind of a presentation lined up, you want to touch on the highlights, but I don't want to short suit anybody, if anybody has any questions on anything, you know, please, put it out there, because, but I didn't necessarily want to go through, I think, everything, unless the other commissioners did necessarily everything, because it's a lot there. So, sorry, with that, Kyle, did you have your hand up, or was it still up? I can't, I don't know if you, or did you have?
Yeah, that was from earlier.
Okay, all right, so sorry, with that, Megan? Take it away.
So, did you want to start us out, or?
No, I'll let you go right into it.
Okay. What we've been doing is the past two meetings is going over the form-based districts, and then taught, and making sure that the structure of that was correct, how it was being presented, and, and the details, and I think with this past meeting tonight, we've gotten to a place where I think we can say that can take everybody's input, make edits, and then bring you, bring you a draft that I think reflects what, what's needed to go forward, and that might be easier to comment upon as well. If you are, what I would recommend folks doing is, in the latest draft that there was for the form-based districts, there was a flow chart that was multicolored, I think that's your best guide to see how it works, what, just to keep in mind that there are three things that are regulating things, and, well, actually, four things that are regulating things, instead of just what you're used to, and in terms of just use and setbacks, and it's just applied across the zoning ordinance, instead, there's the regulations peg on the type of street, the type of lot, and those deter, deter the type of building that can go on there, and then also on a parallel track is what the use are, what the use is, and so, and what the subcommittee also said was they felt like a table of uses for all the form-based districts would be more useful than having them in, along with the, along with the building types, because it just got a lot to, a lot to process, a lot to, a lot to, a lot to kind of come together, so too complicated. So, we'd be happy to answer any questions, but, you know, as you've gone through it, I'm sure you do have some questions, but I would just say that it's going to change in the next month, some things are going to be tightened, where some, some, some things where we said the planning commission would have that power, the city council will, and I think the only really outstanding question for the planning commission as a group is, what should the lot with be of a residential, of, of a typical residential lot in the village, so that site type A? And we talked about that last session, but I know, Matt, you weren't here, and a couple of other people weren't here, and so if you had input on making that lot with smaller, I think it would be really, I know I would really appreciate hearing that aspect, because that would affect at least two or three points in the ordinance, in terms of, in the draft zoning ordinance that we need to change.
So, I'm, I mean, in, in particular, were you looking for the lot with feedback necessarily now, or were you saying like, wait, I mean, I mean, I thought, I looked through what was previous before, and I thought that that seems reflective of what we've got, so I didn't necessarily have an, an issue, but I didn't know if you wanted something more specific, but I was looking through that, so, that seems to fit in with the pattern, so I was okay.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, no, that, that's helpful, it's just if, if you had qualms about it, we would want to know,
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you.
If it seems to fit, then we can go along that track and continue along that track.
Yeah, no, that's great, there, there's so many moving pieces, I know to this, that, that, that is a crucial piece, because you do want, I mean, that's, that's the form, of course, so I think, yeah, so we did look at that, but, yeah, I thought it was pretty consistent, so.
Okay, yeah. So, again, you'll, you'll get it all together, all together, probably in your, in your next packet, and then just know that some of the pieces aren't as polished as they could be, because at the end, we're going to, you're going to have a product that's in in design, and to edit in, in design, as I told the subcommittee, is difficult, so what we want to do is have all the graphics and the, and the text set, so when you look at it, there's some gaps, there's some big white spaces and things like that, those will go away in the final draft, it's just right now, it's more efficient to continue to work in Word, and have the, and, and have the, the illustrations separate, and then we'll bring those all together at the end when everything's right, rather than correct as we go, because it's just not, it's, it's a, it makes a beautiful product, but it's not a simple thing to edit in it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, did I interrupt you?
No, no, but it looks like Chat, do you have a question?
Yes, I was gonna say, it's Chat.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I do. I've got a few pages of questions and comments, and I don't know whether we want to spend a ton of time going through all of the different things that I've found that I have questions with at this point in time. I mean, if everybody's like this, we could be here till tomorrow, so, is there a more efficient way for me to 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 raise my, my point?
Um, I think if you, if you have a long list, you can always feel free to email that to me and Michelle, myself and Michelle, and we can go through it, and as we go through, then, what I've been doing as I've been going through the drafts, because I have gotten those from the subcommittee members as well, is if it's a small change, like, you know, a spelling error or inconsistency in terms of wording or things like that, what we'll do is just change it, because it's all draft. What we'll do is just change it because it's all draft. But if it's a larger issue, what we'll do is bring is make a comment on it and then bring it up to the group. But I think my challenge to you right now is, are there questions that you have that you feel are worth discussion with your fellow planning commissioners at this time in order for you to feel comfortable for this going forward as it is?
Well, to an extent, but but not, not tremendously. They there's some points that that could be made, I suppose. And one of them, for instance, is the use of the term historic throughout the document. References to meeting the historic style or whatever. To me, that's a rather nebulous word. What's the story? In other words, is free bird building historic? It's pretty old. So are we talking when we're talking historic? The you know, the three story, the one that most, the ones that most people would make reference to. But if so, is there a definition somewhere that 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 defines that? Because I think there needs to be. There'll be confusion when someone comes in and say, no, that building's not historic. And then there'll be discussion as to, well, yes, it is, or what is it? And many cases where I saw the term used, it really didn't need to be there because you could say you want the character to to match the surrounding buildings without saying the surrounding or whatever, historic building adjacent, you know, and it says the same thing. So so that's a question. That's kind of a, that's kind of a general question, but that's the sorts of things that I kind of picked up in here that I just wondered about.
I think if if Meghan, if it's okay, because I know, I mean, I did have, I I wasn't completely, like, I mean, I did a good run through the the document, but I I didn't really like necessarily pick through as much as I I probably would like to in a little bit more detail, because this is really the first time that I I kind of went through. So, I mean, I would, for the other commissioners as well, I mean, we I mean, I don't want to put our schedule off too too much, but I mean, I think if we were what I was planning, I mean, it would be good to see everybody's comments, kind of, if if we have some in writing. And I would love to see all chats and if anybody else has some, even if they're necessarily more minor, but so maybe we we could, I mean, I really want to stress the commission, if we can really focus on some of this in the next month and or not really, not sorry, like in the next week or so to get Meghan some comments in writing. So that at least you can maybe compile them for the next meeting and we could and then maybe you'll have a way of sorting out, yeah, these are tight typographical kind of things. And these are more, maybe more, because there were again, some some that I have, but some mine might duplicate chats. Like I had a question about their story. That's always been my question. So do you think if if that's agreeable, could we, could we maybe spend maybe the next week set a deadline with planning commission to contribute, set those comments in?
Matt, you're my hero. Like the the those type of comments and and that type of in input from a variety of planning commissioners is very helpful to us when writing this. Because we're, we're using your current zoning ordinance as a base. But there may be some things in there, but you know, I, we haven't, we haven't been here through the whole journey and many of you have. And then and then that that helps them to figure out, okay, well, what language do we need to change and how do we need to present this differently? So that would be, that would be lovely and appreciated.
Okay, so if we can, as a commission, maybe within the next week, do you think that's fair, Meghan, that like next, next well, today's Tuesday, but maybe by next Monday to get Meghan all of our written comments. And then even if it's necessarily minor, then maybe, yeah, you can at least hopefully, maybe that gives you some time to group them, get rid of, and then we get the substance of our discussion. Because there is, there's so much here and and it's great, but we are doing a complete workaround of our code, but so, yeah, okay. So and and Kyle, I see you have your hand up, or is that still?
Oh, yeah, no, that I did just put that up. So, I mean, we, should we include everybody on the Dropbox files we have? We have one already with a lot of comments on it.
Oh, would that be, well, how would be the best way? Or do you want them just to email?
I think just to email at this point, because we've had some difficulties with printing the Dropbox comments. While they've been a great way, you know, not all these electronic platforms work well with printing. So I think what we prefer to do is to compile them and then I, you know, we can make commitments back that they'll be in comments in Word or the PDF or on Dropbox in some way that we can still share on paper and electronically.
Okay. Good question, Kyle. Thanks. Anything else? Any other comments from Meghan? Again, we don't, if there's other big issues, we can still discuss it now, but so please, anything else for Meghan? Michelle, Mike, anything? Okay, so, yeah, so commission, that's our assignment. It's a, it's a lot to go over. Again, not necessarily our last chance. It's not at all our last chance, but we do want to get at least if they're going off in the wrong direction, we want to correct them before they're too far down that path.
Absolutely.
And I I just would say what's, what has been helpful sometimes is to pick a site in one of the zoning districts and then apply the code.
Sounds good. Yeah.
So pick a site, apply the code. And and one of the presentations we did, we 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 walked to the zoning to the subcommittee, and I think it was in your packet last time. So we walked through three of them. One was the site for tonight. One was Saint Joseph's Church. And I forget what the other one was. But so then if I, if you apply it, then then you'll see kind of the the nuances of how the the three different things plus the use come into play.
What specifically, what do you mean by apply the code to?
So let's take, let's take Saint Joseph's Church for example. So there and let's say for some reason, they decided to sell it and it was up for development. In this draft code that you were given, if you were sitting in Michelle's seat and somebody said, I want to know what I can do there. You would look at the zoning ordinance and find out. So and it could be, I mean, it could be your house. It could be, you know, something that, just anything that falls in those farm-based districts.
Yeah, that that's, that's great advice, Meghan, because it it does help that particularly for people that kind of the non-planners that aren't to to really help visualize that is to apply it, right? Because that's where we'll get, and probably when we start doing that is when we'll have these questions, you know, for that's when the kind of things pop up. So, okay, that's, that's, that's good. All right, any any other questions for Meghan? Again, so we got a lot of information here. Let's try to get through this in the next week. All right, any other? Okay, well, I think, so Meghan, do you have anything else to add? But thank you, guys, the subcommittee. You guys are really doing a lot of work. So that I I appreciate that. Thank you, guys, for putting that extra time in. All right, um, anything else on the zoning from anybody?
Don't feel bad, Matt. They give us a half hour for dinner.
You got that all done in a half an hour, right? So that's plenty of time, Kyle.
I use it to walk the dog personally, so hopefully I don't get hangry later.
All right, we better, we better stop the meeting for the next petitioners sake, better not be too hangry. Okay, all right. Well, so I guess with that, we will move right along to the new business item. So the new kind of repeat item, but I guess we've got this coming back as a combined, the preliminary and final site plan for the your office building. Michelle, do we want to have her staff? Were you pointing?
I think she's pointing to me perhaps.
Oh, that's right, Mike sitting next to us. I was looking at my, I don't see anything over there. Okay, got you. You need to point down, Mike's right below you. Okay, there you go. Perfect. Okay, Mike?
Thank you. So this is a combined site plan review application for the project that the commission reviewed a preliminary plan of in May, and the applicants are proposing, as they were last time, a two-unit medical office building. They've reduced the overall square footage from seven thousand eight hundred seventy-eight square feet to five thousand one hundred sixty-nine square feet. And what I'll do is I'll, I'll, the applicants are here tonight, the property owners, a new in Radica, represented by Alice Bishop of AR Brower. And I will hand it over to Meghan and Marcus to present their reports. I'll follow up with any notes that staff has.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. So as Mike stated, they, this is a combined site combined preliminary and final site plan for five thousand seven hundred sixty-nine square foot building. And the uses that are proposed, which is professional office is permanent in the professional business district. Other site improvements include the removal of an existing driveway on site, relocated driveway in Dexter and Arbor Road, a twenty-four parking, twenty-four space parking area with a carport, with a solar carport, two-screen trash receptacles, detention pond and a bio-retention area. The site meets all of the setbacks. Then in terms of natural features, the applicants proposing remove three of the twenty-two trees on site and degrade the site for stormwater management. As you know, from the last time, that's a significant amount of more of tree preservation than they had before. The existing buffer on the southern, eastern property lines is proposed for preservation, and that's going to be augmented with landscaping to screen the adjacent single-family attached housing. In terms of the building location, a six-foot, the location of the proposed building meets all the dimensional requirements of the PD district. And the building fronts in Arbor Dexter Road with the primary entrance as that is required by the by the overlay district, a six-foot security fence is proposed around the detention pond. It's a small detail. But the illustration of the fence on sheet thirteen should be labeled as proposed pond, pond, security fence to match the label and the key. Just so there's no confusion in terms of what's what. As I stated before, they were using a twenty-four parking spaces, two of which will be barrier-free. And there's a four parking space carport and that carport has solar panels, so assuming that it would be a charging station. The carports going, should be reviewed and permitted under the zoning permit process for detached accessory structures. So if you granted site plan tonight, or if you recommended site plan, a combined site plan in city council approve that plan, they would, it's just like the signs. They would have to go and get a separate permit on that. So you're not necessarily, you're just saying that we, you know, it's fine where it is. But it would go through that other review, just like a sign does, under that separate part of the zoning ordinance. Also, no loading areas are proposed when they were here before. That was talked about and the applicant states the only commercial package delivery trucks are expected to bring deliveries to the potential tenants. One part loading space is required, but the planning commission can waive that requirement if it finds that no loading space is required to accommodate the specific characteristics of the use in question. And as you know, the building is designed as an office, which does not necessarily necessitate, necessitate a large loading space. A loading space that's larger than a parking space, which you might have a different situation if it was a retail, a large retail establishment, or if it was an industrial establishment. In terms of site access, a single commercial driveway is proposed for access to Dexter and Arbor Road. And I know the engineer has a couple of more comments about that and spacing. For sidewalks, they have a sidewalk, the sidewalk is connected, the site's connected to the sidewalk along Dexter and Arbor Road with the proposed five-foot wide sidewalk leading to the front entrance of the building. It goes around the building as well and is seven feet in the appropriate places so that there can be a car overhang, whether it's not a bumper block. The applicant also proposes to dedicate two feet of the public pedestrian easement for the public sidewalk that's outside of the right-of-way. And there's some right-of-way changes along. Again, I'm sure the town, the city engineer is going to talk a little bit more about that. In terms of landscaping, there is a request for landscaping credits. They're asking to use twenty-four of the possible thirty-two tree credits for preservation of trees in fair to good condition, which species are not listed in section where they're not a prohibited species. The planning commission can approve this credit for existing trees unpreserved, preserved in the developed portion of the site. And the trees credits are listed on the existing tree list and sheet ten qualify for the credits listed. And terms of composition, they meet the requirements in terms of the plant, single genus, the plant can't compromise more than twenty-five percent of proposed landscaping or a single species more than ten percent. However, there is a listing of species that are proposed, which are not recommended species listed in six, section six eleven. Rose of Sharon, Norway spruce, white pine and hackberry. The planning commission can waive the requirements of six eleven, but I think staff has some advice on the different species that are proposed. Terms of greenbelt trees, replacement trees, the waste receptacle, parking lot screening, online landscaping, interior parking lot. They meet, they comply with all of the requirements of the ordinance. Where in terms of landscaping between uses, the applicants ask for waivers on the southern and the eastern property lines. And in each case, what they've asked for is that there, instead of some, instead of the shrubs that are required, they sixty-three shrubs, they are proposing eighteen, but they also are preserving trees and and landscaping there, nine trees. So they really, where nine trees are required, they're they're providing between preservation and proposed, they're providing nine, where they're providing eighteen trees. And on the other property line, it's instead of forty-one shrubs, they're proposing eleven and there are six proposed and six tree credits. And so there's those tree credits are looking, are looking to be in lieu of those shrubs. And it's up to you to decide whether that waiver meets. I will say that based on the changes from the last time, they've preserved a lot of the landscaping. I feel like they've listened to the input that you were, you you gave them in terms of trying to preserve as much as possible and then augment it. In terms of lighting, their, their plan meets the zoning ordinance with one exception, section fifteen B O two C five requires street lighting along the roadway matching the existing landscaping, lighting poles light and poles and layout. However, the city council suspended the engineering standards requirement for streetlights within the DVA. And this falls into that, I guess, I I think I'll let staff clarify that and see advised against requiring streetlights for the site plan as impractical. And you, the planning commission, can recommend deviations to the city's street lighting standards when it determines the applicant has adequately demonstrated the alternative lighting plans meet the intent and purposes of the ordinance and provide sufficient lighting necessary for safety and security purposes. Terms of signs, they have, should building mounted signs on the south and east elevations. Those all must comply with Article seven and the, as well as ground signs, and those must be under separate permits. In terms of elevations, the, they've changed one item since the last time, blue accent, I think, ons have been added since last minute submission and the roof material. Asphalt shingles has been specified. Still outstanding is whether the building as proposed meets the architectural standard for Dexter and Arbor Road. The proposed hip roof is more of a nod to the regulation that the roof shape and material should be archa- architecturally compatible with the district and enhance the predominant streetscape rather than a full embrace. I know staff has cited also two other sections of those or of the standards for you to think about. Then the planning commission should determine whether the proposed architecture meets the standards of the An Arbor Road corridor overlay district. With, there's a number of determinations that we feel that you should look at tonight. Number one, waiver the recording, required loading space. They requested twenty-four tree credits for preservation of the existing trees on site. Waiver the requirements for six eleven along the species and landscape plans proposed. Landscaping waivers on the east and south property line buffer areas. Whether the architecture meets the architectural standards of the overlay district and a recommendation of deviations or or will waiver, waiver the city's street lighting standards. Also, we feel that there's a four minor things listed in our letter that if you recommend approval of the combined site plan should be accompany that motion. I'd be happy to take any questions or also I know. I'd be happy to take any questions, or, um, also, I know Marcus, um, and Mike both have comments as well.
Maybe, um, if it's okay, let's go to Marcus, uh, next, and then, um, maybe Mike, and then we, we can, um, wrap it up, perhaps if the petitioner wanted to add something, and then have some commission discussion and probably questions following, I'm sure. Um, okay, so Marcus, would you like to present?
Sure. Well, good evening. Thank you. So we have our letter dated June twenty-first, I believe, in, in the packet. Uh, so the majority of our, uh, comments in the letter, uh, were either housekeeping items or items that are directly related to the access management, which, you know, the location of the drive and the separation, and that, that was challenging for this site, just given the frontage that it has and the development that's already along the corridor. So the applicant actually, uh, we had some comments during the preliminary site plan, uh, stage. Um, and, um, uh, between now and then to, uh, come up with the best fit for the site. And so we believe that the plan that you have, uh, when it comes to the access drive location is, is, is a good one, uh, but there are some procedural, um, things that need to be taken care of, just because of the ordinance requirement. So, uh, with that intro, I guess I'll just kind of quickly walk through the comments in the letter. First was, um, uh, we're recommending, uh, if, if the applicants inclined, uh, to actually do a quick claim deed to dedicate the thirty-three foot right-of-way as part of the project. Not a requirement per se, but it's a good time to do it. The property is currently described under line, um, so while we're doing development and doing other things, this would be a, a good opportunity to clean that up and actually dedicate the right. As it comes to ass, uh, access management, um, the, um, ordinance requires the, uh, the drives be located entirely in the frontage right-of-way of the, of the parcel, including the, uh, the radii on either side of this particular parcel. You know, the property line isn't perpendicular with, with the property, um, as it approaches the right-of-way. And it does have somewhat narrow frontage for a commercial piece, so actually, issue for the drive is really hugging the, the, what's the south property line of this parcel. Um, and for the stated in the letter, um, we're recommending the planning commission support that, the way for that requirement. Or the three reasons stated, that the, the, the adjacent parcel, um, is already developed with access off here on View Court, so there isn't, there's really a potential for, uh, that. By, uh, straightening out the drive, which is what we requested that they do, actually necessitates this, and that's a much safer configuration for vehicles coming in and out, uh, so to take the advantage. And actually, leaning into the next point with the separation from the existing access points in the area, uh, that actually basically is the best location to balance, um, the offset from, uh, the existing curb, uh, drives on that same side and the opposite side of the road, so. Similarly, a, a waiver is required then for drives that don't meet the access management standards when it comes to, um, separations, um, from existing drives. So they are compliant with the drive, uh, on the same side of the road to the north of them, uh, they exceed the, the separation requirement. Twelve feet, uh, closer, um, than the standard requires on the opposite side of the, the road, north of them, so interesting, right, the drive. So that twelve-foot waiver would be, um, we believe would be appropriate. There is a requirement to have two hundred feet separation, um, of roads on the same side of the, the road as the proposed driveway. And, and actually, when I really read into the ordinance, I didn't realize this, I, I didn't think initially, but that actual measurement is, is different than, than most of the others. Most of the other, uh, is are measured from centerline to drive to centerline to drive, which is what the plans understandably. When you're measuring the offset from a road, it actually, the ordinance requires that be measured from basically the curb line of the drive to the near curb line of the road. To clarify that, what that distance is and how soon they have.
Marcus, your, your audio is coming in and out a little bit. I'm not sure if there's anything you could do to adjust that or not. I can hear you for the most part, but you're.
I can try turning off the video and see if that helps.
Okay.
Okay. So we just need to clarify, we are recommending the waiver, it's something slightly less than a hundred and seventy-eight feet that's provided, um, when two hundred is required. The applicant has acknowledged the, that an easement is required from the neighboring here-on-view court condominiums for the stormwater outlet. That, that would be a, a condition of approval. Um, and we have talked about, there was some, when, when the original structure was, uh, demolished there, the DPW allowed the water and sewer services to be basically cut and capped at the right-of-way line, knowing that this project was coming. And so we're just pointing out that that needs to be addressed the way the DPW had required, um, they issued that approval. And then, the, uh, really the last item we had is, there is a, the stormwater calculations had some real minor areas that, that aren't going to affect the size of the pond, um, or the, uh, layout of the site, but they're just some housekeeping items with the, the stormwater calculation chart that's on the plans to be corrected. And then Megan mentioned the, um, streetlight item, and I think Mike can probably talk about that in more detail, but. So, um, summary then is, uh, the site from an engineer's standpoint, it looks good. It does have some challenges that are specific to the site, which are addressed, can be addressed with the recommended waivers to the access management.
Great. Well, I think you faded out there at the end. You, mostly we heard you, I think. Okay, so we, we may call you back up for some questions, I guess, as we get into some discussion items here. So, all right, so next, would we like the app, Michelle?
I've, I've got a few, uh, comments to share, um.
Okay.
Marcus, yeah, and, and Marcus, I think, uh, it, it is helpful, the, the sound thing didn't really get cleared up, but it is helpful, I think, to see you as well, so, um, if, uh, when you're speaking again, if you could. So, um, uh, I think Megan and Marcus covered, uh, just about everything. Uh, on page one hundred seventy of your packet, there's a list of all the determinations and waivers that the planning commission will need to review. So, uh, just to provide some structure during discussion, um, if you'd like to refer to that or go down the list. Those are all the determinations the commission will need to make. A number of the items that Megan and Marcus mentioned were discussed during preliminary site plan review. The first of which is the labor, with the waiver for the loading space requirement. There was no, uh, opposition, uh, voiced by the commission at that time, and, um, or any concerns raised by staff about waiving that loading space requirement. Same with the driveway consideration waivers, staff supports, OHM's recommendation, uh, to, uh, approve the, the requested waivers to allow that straight driveway alignment. Regards to the landscaping, as Megan mentioned, the applicant has provided all the necessary information for the commission to make the necessary determinations about the landscape plan and waiver request. Uh, the waiver, as, as Megan mentioned, is from the southeastern side, and you could call northeastern side buffers, as well as some of the interior landscaping. And, uh, the existing trees and many of the proposed trees, trees there will be evergreens. Again, the waiver is from, uh, required shrubs. And a consideration for granting that waiver listed in section six point one three could be the existing topology, whether it makes those, uh, whether it, so the, the nature of the, the site itself, the landscape or existing vegetation, gives a basis to grant those waiver requests. Again, there is, the applicant did preserve the existing berm along that eastern property line, and there is also a slope along the southern line, so it could be that the shrubs wouldn't be that effective a buffer uh, anyway, given that the drop from the site itself to the, uh, adjacent, um, dwellings. As Meg, as Megan mentioned, staff are also recommending waiving the street lighting requirement. The site is within the DDA, uh, and, uh, council had waived an engineering standard requirement for streetlights to be provided within the DDA. There is also a requirement for streetlights in the, uh, Dexter and Arbor Road overlay dis- section, but that can also be something that can be waived as, uh, established in Article Three. And after discussion, a brief, uh, discussion of it with the city manager and superintendent, they agreed it would be uh, a challenge to provide street lighting at this site, given that there aren't existing streetlights nearby. Yeah, no, the last item, uh, that the, not a waiver request, but a determination that the commission is going to need to make has to do with the, uh, Dexter and Arbor Road, uh, design standards. One of which was discussed at the last meeting, it's a, uh, a, a determination that the, the setback of the proposed site from the roadway is consistent with the, uh, adjacent, adjacent properties with the exception of Morning Star. And as we discussed at the last meeting, Morning Star is a bit of an anomaly in that section along corridor. And even though that stretch of Dexter and Arbor is planned for a hundred twenty-foot right-of-way in the master plan, achieving that would be somewhat impractical, given the other, uh, properties adjacent to the site. The second component is the, the building design, and as Megan mentioned, there are three, uh, applicable criteria in the Ann Arbor Road overlay that, uh, roof design, um, one of which requires consistency with, uh, adjacent building types, and, uh, two others encourage, um, gip, or sorry, gable and hip style roofs. So again, the, um, whether the proposed architecture is consistent with those standards or not is a question that the planning commission will need to make. And the last item is the, the request to ask of the applicant if they're amenable to put quickly indeed the, uh, of sidewalk dedication. So I believe, uh, those are the additional items I had. Conditions of the suggested motions are listed on page one seventy-one, and, uh, we can either, either take questions or turn it over to the applicant for a presentation.
Maybe we'll go to the applicant quickly, uh, kind of summarize up, and then we'll probably head back to offer some questions and discussion. Um, okay, so I do see the applicant, uh, Bishop's on the line, so would you like to? And, and I also, I see we have the architect as well, and probably maybe somebody from their engineering. See that offhand, but, but, um, so I, I'm not sure, Allison, do you want to give us a little background, or Rob? Or, or not? I mean, you don't necessarily have to. You're still muted, Allison.
Sorry about that. I thought I had to be unmuted, but anyway, um, good evening. Just running to go, everybody gave a great synopsis, so I won't repeat anybody, but, um, we have provided a draft response letter to Michelle, and we have addressed all of the issues. We have easements prepared, we have, um, to submit. I guess we've acknowledged a lot of the engineering stuff, that we will take care of that stuff. We know that we'll have to submit for a carport later, um, so I guess I just wanted to briefly go over. Uh, we took the feedback from the planning commission at the last meeting. Um, we, we worked hard to change that basin, uh, to preserve that berm and preserve a lot of the trees. So hopefully, uh, the deviations for the landscaping will be strongly considered, um, given our efforts to, uh, keep the site vegetated and, um, buffered from the adjacent land uses. In, in effort to do that, we reduced the parking lot size, and we also reduced the building size, um, and then made it a phase, a, a one-phase project as opposed to a two-phase project, which I think, um, creates less complication for reviewing the project moving forward. The tree species, uh, we, you, you know, I guess the, it's, it's fine if we want to switch, switch some of those, uh, but they are, I guess, not, not included on the recommended list, but they're also not included on the prohibited list, so, um, if you're willing to consider that, um, the landscape architect is a qualified and, and has prepared a, a good plan. Um, also wanted to just briefly talk that we did meet with the homeowners association again on June twenty-third. They are, are asking that they have a third party review the detention and the stormwater plan, I think just for some peace of mind. So, uh, Anew and Radica will be helping, uh, fund that so that they can have, uh, confidence that the plan will work. And then, uh, we have asked them to get back with us, um, by July sixteenth, so, uh, we haven't been led to believe that, that won't happen, so, um, other than that, we're, we're happy with the plan that we've presented, and, um, we hope that you are satisfied with some of the changes that we, that we attempted to make. So that's all I have, Rob, unless you want to add anything.
Thank you, Allison. Uh, Mr. Kerr, would you like to add anything, or?
Yeah, um, yeah, as Allison said, we made, uh, we strive to, to, to listen to you folks and to make some changes and adjustments to the building and to the site. We believe that, um, you know, I, I think this would be a very nice project on the street. I think it'll, it'll fit in well, and, um, and we're excited to get started.
Thank you. We may, we may have some additional questions for you. Okay, so I guess a, at this time, um, as we said, we, we do have a, um, we'll look to a motion for planning commission, and we can have some discussion questions for the, uh, for the applicant. Uh, we do have our sample motions on page one seventy-one. Um, and again, if you remember, this is a combined final preliminary, so if it does move past us tonight, this would be our last opportunity to, uh, see the plan. And they do have, again, listed on page one seventy-one are kind of a list of items that, that need to be addressed is in addition to, uh, the conditions. So there are, uh, if, if we look to make a motion, we can have some discussion. There are, I believe, eight, it looks like there's eight actual action items that we need to make a decision on here tonight, the waivers, as well as the determination of the compatibility with the, uh, corridor standards. So, um, with that, if we could have, um, if anybody would feel comfortable making a motion, and then we can, um, have some discussion and questions, please. Anybody like to make a motion?
Would, Matt, would you, would the commission prefer to discuss things first?
Perhaps, if, if we're not getting a motion. Okay. For discussion, but if, if we're not, we may want, I don't see anybody jumping at the bit here, um.
Well, the motions that you, there on the table were the two suggested motions, right? And the idea of talking about them ahead of a motion appeals to me.
Okay, there we go. Okay, so with that, we can have some discussion before our motion is made tonight. We'll, we'll change it up a bit. There we go. All right. So with that, Mr. Hill, would you like some, uh, discussion? Lead it off, please.
There's, um, a couple of questions. I'm glad to hear there is a landscape architect on the team. I'm, I'm just curious to know, um, why these particular tree species were selected uh, as opposed to the recommended. There's quite a list of plants that would do the same thing on the recommended list. Um, I'm not familiar with roses Sharon particularly, and I like white pine, even though the comment was made that the deer like it too, but in my experience, they're wonderful trees. And, uh, and again, in my, my experience, hackberry is kind of a messy tree, so I'm, I know some of these trees, and therefore, that, that's kind of my question. I don't really have strong issues, but, uh, that rose of Sharon is to me strange, and I don't think I've ever specified one of those. Know what they are, good-looking tree, they're not native, um, but anyway, so it was more curiosity.
To the point, sorry, really quickly to the roses Sharon, I, I have several of them. That was going to be one of my questions. It's pretty minor. They can become extremely invasive. They shed out thousands of seeds. I pull them out of everywhere. They're great if you want to fill, fill in a buffer zone. So anyway, that's just kind of a relatively minor issue, but I was kind of curious why they chose that species, but.
Yeah, I congratulate, I congratulate I congratulate the, uh, the, um, the team, the design team for doing what they've done to preserve the, uh, uh, the berm and the trees that are there, as many of them as they did. I mean, the, the change is, um, is amazing that you were able to accomplish what you did, so I congratulate you. So I congratulate that, so my, my questions are pretty minor in that regard. And then the other question that I do have is the building itself, the amount of flat roof. If I remember correctly, the, it was, the mention was made that you needed quite a bit of flat roof for mechanical purposes. The air conditioners, all of that's going to be up on the roof. And it's understandable, I suppose, if that's the case. But to me, it would be very easy to modify a roof configuration to accommodate the concerns very little expense, but it's not a big issue with me either. I know it is for a lot of commissioners here. But the building itself is also come a long way. Really, I didn't, I didn't have a lot of questions, those are, those are basically my thoughts. The driveway, the lighting, all of those waivers, I'm, I'm fine with sidewalk, that sort of stuff. I'm totally fine with that stuff.
All good, thank you, I'm, sorry, so I don't know if the architect or if you want to comment anything about the design aspect at this time? Or I know there were a couple of changes, were there some changes made to the design aspect from the first meeting?
So, so yeah, we, we, we went back, we, we talked about all the issues that you folks had. Part of it was to make a part of the building a little more different than the other, which was to pull that corner out on, on two corners. And, and that allowed us to give the pitched roof. And, and most of that facade from the street, probably half of it is, is pitched roof look. Then that allowed us also, that, what that does allows us room to put our mechanical equipment on the roof and to hide it, not have it down on the ground. We, we think that, you know, your comments helped us to, to, to improve the building, sort of the undulation of the facade, I think helped a lot, and I think it'll be a nice looking building on the street.
Okay, any, Alice, or any comments about the landscaping? Are you particularly tied to those tree species, or is that just?
No, am I still unmuted?
Yeah, you're, you're okay.
Okay, the, the association next door requested, they also had a comment about deer, and so they had requested that we consider a different, not the Norway spruce, they would prefer maybe a con color fur. So Chad, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that? I mean, if there's a, if there is a suggestion for a substitute for rose of Sharon, you're not going to get any pushback from me.
Concorde fur is a fine, fine tree.
I mean, I, getting kind of dogwoods or things like that, that are similar to that, but it's something more native, but I just, I know they can become really invasive, and they spread, they're like weeds. They're really, they're pretty because they attract butterflies and hummingbirds, but they spread. So no, I don't have specific, but we swap that out. Yes, Michelle?
So I got to remember what I was going to say. Went in my head, and now it's gone. I'm sorry?
You're just talking about the tree species, maybe that was something to do with that?
Oh, as it pertains to con colors, con colors were planted at kinder care, and they all died. There's a, there's a lack of nutrient in the soil. It may not be the best substitute for the, for the Norway spruce, considering all of that area is pretty much the same soil type, if I'm not mistaken. If planning commission will, is a, is amenable, the staff can work with the applicant on alternative species. And you can make that as part of your motion, or your determination.
I think the bigger thing for us is just making sure that we can do the alternative landscape and the buffers. That, that's a bigger issue for us.
Right, the species, you guys can, you need to know if you're set with the number and the locations. Yeah, so that makes sense, so I think, I mean personally, I'd be comfortable with that, but we'll see when the motion's made if, if we go forward with that. So planning commissioners, other, other items, or Mr. Hill, are you still?
Let me, let me back up just a little bit, and I hate to hog time, but the, Mr. Kerr, you mentioned why you went with flat roof, and that's what I had understood previously. But on your elevations, you don't show any equipment on those roofs, and it's going to be visible, right? I mean, you're not, how are you going to conceal the equipment that you have on the roof? And what will that look like if it's a board fence up there for instance screening? That, you know, that'll be awful.
Well, if you, if you, the, the sloping of that roof goes from what we would call the east to the west. So the lowest part of that roof is on the west side, or the closest to the childcare center. That, that parapet will be high enough to be able to hide AC units that are on the roof. So, so you won't see them, they aren't in the rendering, you're right, but they're not that tall. They're probably three, three and a half feet tall, and there'll be, there'll be several of them up there. There'll probably, there'll probably be four, maybe five units on that roof.
Okay, so you won't be able to see them from the road, essentially.
That's correct.
Additional, oh, Karen Roberts, yes.
Excuse me, one question I had is, I was trying to get a, and I couldn't really see it clearly on sheet 13, the fencing around the detention pond, and it, I'm wondering kind of what that's going to look like, and it sounds like it's going to be a real feature. And I don't have any idea what goes into when you see beautifully landscaped to what looked to me like detention ponds various places. Could this not be that? I mean, does it have to have a six-foot fence? That if I'm looking at the right fence in, in a plan, it looks pretty, it looks like a real presence, and not particularly, you know, it looks like it could be hiding a dumpster. It's not that nice, so that, that's my question, are there any options around that?
To that point really quick, if I can, Matt, that, that is a, the fence is a, is an engineering standard requirement. As we discussed it, we don't necessarily have an avenue to waive that sort of thing, or at least it's not something the city's done before. It, a fence is wired, six-foot fence, ground, detention pods, that's just bespoke, and this pond does. So that's why the defense was included.
Yeah, Michelle, or Michelle, you also have your hand up, and I know Megan just put her, was that to answer? The mic just answered you.
No, I want, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, so Michelle and Megan.
So my request to the planning commission would be to consider asking the applicant to provide a perspective from, from the pedestrian or from the street, since the rooftop units aren't shown, and, and I believe you said, Mr. Kerr, there would be four or five units. There should be a perspective to clearly demonstrate that they will not be seen from the road.
And to add to that, I think the, specifically the higher elevation roadway west of the site from the Morning Star.
Right.
If that was the side you were referring to.
I think both sides, all, you know, coming from the, the west, the east, and then straight on.
Okay, so a street perspective, help show the, the placement of the mechanical equipment on the roof. Okay, so that would be an additional item here. Yes, cut. I'm sorry, Megan, did, Megan, did you have your, Megan wanted to?
Well, there were two things, and Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the schedule regulations, doesn't it say that you all rooftops, all rooftops have to, rooftop apparatus have to be screened from the street? So that is something that they would need to abide by no matter what. And I agree that the perspective would help guarantee on paper before it's built that we know that they could comply with that regulation. To what Karen was saying about the fence, one thing to keep in mind is this is where that fence is, is one of the lowest parts on the site. And there's significant grade change in, in the site. So what seems huge as a six-foot fence is going to be four to five feet below where it is. And I don't have the plans in front of me, maybe Allison or somebody else from the applicant does. But there's going to be a grade change from the sidewalk to where that fence is. Plus, you're going to have the landscaping, so when you think of it in three dimensions like this, I can see how, when you look at that fence on paper in and of itself, it may seem overwhelming, but where it's placed on the site, i.e. that lowest place, because it's part of the stormwater detention, I don't think it's going to have the impact that it would if it was right up against, if it was on that, one of the highest places of the site. And again, it's an engineering standard that we can't waive. I just wanted to bring those two points up, thank you, Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, I did notice, just for future reference, it does look, so it looks like the one corner, I guess it'd be kind of the northwest corner, close to Morning Star, it looks like it's about six feet. It says it's about 930 elevation, the detention, the, the top of the elevation basement, basin looks like it's at 924, so yeah, so that's about six feet. So anyway, Chad, I know you put your hand up, but then Tom Phillips first, and then we can go to Chad. Yes?
Um, yes, just, I did check and just online here, and there's no roof screens on either the Bushes site, or really any of the area office buildings. Everything, just the units are pushed back on the roof and not visible. So I guess I would be surprised if they needed a roof screen. Those tend to be ugly anyway, so just, just, I think you, you guys, just like you're saying, you just push them back on the roof towards the backside, no one's going to see them. But I, I don't object to, to an image showing that, you know, to prove to staff, but I don't, I, I wouldn't think it would hang up your approval, though. That's my only comment, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Tom, okay, Mr. Hill?
Um, this is in regards to the fence, one of the things that makes that fence, will make that fence disappear a bit is the color of it, so I would highly recommend that it be a black fence. And I don't know if that's stated on the drawing or in the specs, but as I say, I highly recommend that be part of the plan.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion. Is it a cyclone fence?
It's proposed as a chain link fence, I don't think we specified it, Paul.
Okay.
Well, that's common.
Yeah, if we have additional planning commission feedback, again, remember we do have some, some waivers that are being requested, quite a, quite a few waivers. I will add, right, typically, I, I, I don't like a lot of waivers being granted, but I think in this case, I, I appreciate what the applicant has done. And as far as adjusting that detention basin, saving some of those trees, most of the trees look like they're in pretty good shape. And yeah, I mean, a tree is way more valuable than, than shrubbery at that location, which tends to get overgrown anyway, so. Yeah, I, I, I think those seem like reasonable, and I, I, I'm sure the neighbors would appreciate larger trees in there rather than us making them cut those down and put up little bushes, so. Or, or even adding shrubbery underneath, which wouldn't really address that much. So yeah, the landscaping waivers, I, I, I like how, how you guys redesigned the plan. I, I think that does justify tho- those waiver requests. And also given some of the topography of the site, I think that's, that's a big issue for protecting, you know, some of the buffering from that, that, those adjacent residences. And again, engineering items, I, given that site challenges, I, I think those are, are, yeah. I support those as well, a street lighting, that seems to be kind of a no-brainer. The design, I, I appreciate the changes to the design. That's always a tricky one for me, obviously, I'm not an architect, but I, I, I think the setback, I mean, some of those things I look at for this, really, of, of the street facades, how it presents itself, and really, the, the street, the setbacks, I think are usually really important for setting that, that the streetscape coming into, to, to town on that. And I think that this building does it, address that by obviously being up closer to the street. I personally like the addition of the awnings, I don't know, those may go back and forth between some people, but I, I think that adds a little bit of a touch to it, so. And the carport with the solar panels, that, you know, whether or not, I guess, I, I, I mean, my question, though, I think on that is, it's, it's shown on the site plan, but it, we're not necessarily approving it on the site plan, so it may or may not ever get installed, correct? I mean, it doesn't mean just because it's on the site plan, it will be in, that it's required, right, Michelle?
I mean, the client is interested in doing it, and we intend to provide, you know, pricing, and I think all things considered, I, I believe that A New and Radica are, are really interested in doing it.
Okay, yeah, no, I mean, again, I mean, it's not like, for me, that's not necessarily a deal killer, but, but I, I like that touch. I mean, I wasn't necessarily sold on a carport, but I, I like the, the addition of the solar panels, so that kind of makes the carport a little more acceptable, so.
Yeah, the solar panels aren't an issue. The carport itself has to have separate approval, so.
Kind of like an accessory building or used kind of, type of thing? It's just a separate approval, okay?
Yeah.
All right, so additional feedback from planning commissioners, again, we are looking for some, we can also have a motion, we do have a sample motion to be made on page ones, where I lost my pages, 171, which we can follow up with discussion, again, make note of the waivers that they are requesting on page 170, and in particular, the, we also need to make the judgment call on the corridor standards. So I guess if we don't necessarily hear anything out there, we'll assume that most people are okay with it, but, but I would like to hear some feedback. Yes, well, wait, Kyle, one second maybe, because I think Michelle just raised her hand, and then if you had a comment, Kyle?
Yep.
You, you can take Kyle's comment first, and then I'll follow up now.
I would just request a, a steeper pitch on that hip roof. We're going with like standards of the zone, think about like, you know, United Bank and all the kind of stuff that's gotten built up and down this corridor, the, the roof pitch is, you know, I don't know what this is, like probably a three or a four, but they're, they seem to me all closer to sixes or eights.
Yeah, I, this is Tom, I don't agree with that, I don't think you do it with math and matching things. You got to look at the massing, so.
Roof form is part of massing, Tom, and I think the mass.
Tell me about it, matching a completely different design and sticking it on a different building doesn't make it look good.
No, helps to keep it.
Discussion? Okay, more, all right, well, we had some additional feedback, that's good, Michelle?
Okay, maybe this was asked before, but I don't, I didn't, maybe I just blanked out. The engineer had recommended the dedication of the 33-foot wide half of the road right-of-way. I know we cannot make it a requirement, but I think the question should be asked to the applicant, what their desire is there, and if they're willing to do that.
I thought that there was, originally, we had proposed to do that, but then I thought there was a, the change in the recommendation that it was going to be a pathway easement, because that's, I mean, we already have it drafted and prepared to present based on.
Two separate things. Two separate things, the, the sidewalk, a portion of it is outside of that 33 feet. And what we're, and right now, the property is
Described.
Is described, thank you, to the center lane of the road.
Yeah, we were proposing an easement exhibit for the proposed two-foot public pathway easement. So I guess because, yes, that's not a problem. I mean, we have, we have designed the site, we have designed the site according to foregoing that area.
You're not using that area as part of your site, your density calculation or anything else?
Exactly, so I just have to circle back with MCA and make sure that they drafted it according to what you're describing. But I, I have a copy of those easements, so I'll just have to look back and see if that's how they were, if they were drafted with that particular language.
It would seem to make sense, I mean, it's kind of standard practice. Don't know why they wouldn't want to give that easement over to the city, I mean, it's
Right.
Right, anyway, so.
Right.
It is appreciated, thank you.
Thank you, um, okay, additional, Jim Carty, all right, Mr. Carty has hand up, yes, sir?
Hang on, got to unmute him.
Wait, unmute Mr. Carty.
Sorry about that, I was struggling with my unmute.
That's fine, if you're still driving.
First thing I have to say is I, I commend the applicant for taking the feedback and doing such a good job with it. You know, we don't always see that reaction, I think it's a much better project today than it was the last time we saw it. That said, I'm a little bit torn, I, I don't really think it I don't really think it matches the rest of the corridor. Um, it's not off by a lot. I, I believe one of, someone said, you know, there's a nod to our requirements, and, and I think there is a nod. Um, I'm, I'm generally, you know, and, and I will say, like, Kyle's point about the roof, I, I think that's part of it. Um, I'm fine with all of the other deviations that are being asked for. I think the landscaping, they should just pick some plants from the approved list, but it, it's tough, like, it's a good project. They've done what we've asked. I appreciate that, but I'm not sure it really fits entirely, or, or fits the way we're trying to push people to fit. And so, I don't know, it's tough. I don't know if anyone else feels the same way, but it's, it's close, and the question is, how close is close enough?
Question. Thank you, Jim. Uh, additional, uh, so Jim raises a, a discussion item. All right, Mr. Phillips, hand up, and then, uh, Jim, oh no, Karen Roberts, I guess.
Yeah, I, I, just overall the design, I, I think it's, uh, you know, it's, it's another, uh, C minus project. I, 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 my concern is that, uh, you know, playing with the roof is gonna make it look worse. It's, it's already kind of like just another thing to throw out there. It's not, not well done. It, it's not well thought out. Um, it's another formula cluster of blocks of things. And, uh, I, I, the reason why I, I don't want to say more, I, I don't, I, I, I sympathize with Kyle trying to think of ways to make it, to suggest that it could be better. But I, but I'm more worried about it being worse, and, uh, I, I just, I, I just don't know what to say. I, I don't, you know, if I were owning this thing, I'd start over, but I'm not, and, uh, I think in terms of our ordinance and what it says about design, I mean, we can't legislate good design, and and, uh, so I would say, I guess, you know, I, I sympathize with Jim too. I, I, I don't, you know, I, I don't think it's a matter of context in the area. I think it's just a matter of the quality of the work. It's just, it's just kind of bleak, but I don't, I don't think it's an obstacle, you know, the way um, things are presented to us. I don't know what to do about it, so that's my opinion.
Okay, uh, Karen Roberts?
Well, I, you know, I mean, I kind of want to chime in and agree on the roof. I mean, I, 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 I think it looks like a funny hat, and I, you know, I thought, could we raise the, that portion so it has a bit more of a tower look and get sort of eaves? Uh, over the, uh, uh, you know, extending out as opposed to sort of disappearing behind the, I guess, I don't know what that's called, cornice or something?
The parapet.
Parapet, okay, so that it, 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 that would sort of change the, the look of it, because, you know, just making it taller, I don't think it's gonna do much. Um, and, you know, I'm not an architect, you know, either, so, you know, it's hard for me to comment, except I just think it doesn't, it, it just doesn't, it, it doesn't look, it doesn't fit the scale of the building, um, being such a, sort of, little bit that you're actually seeing. And just making it taller, I think it's just gonna make it look pointier. And if it, if you could ha- have some eaves coming out of it, which would, as I said, I think means a bigger roof and see, I think, this is easy for me to say, it's not my money, but I just feel like that could really change the way that looks. But it isn't my money, so to require it is kind of hard.
Well, no, but I mean, there are standards, so, uh, yes, Michelle?
So, a couple of things real quick. Um, unlike some of our design, design standards where it says may or encourage, like Mike has pointed out in his review, the, the standards in the code are shall. And it makes it very specific to the roof design and pitch, et cetera. So, there's, there, you have to take that into consideration with a great deal more weight than you normally put on design standards. Uh, with that said, Allison is asked to be able to share her screen. Um, Mike, can you make her a co-host so she can do that?
I think you should be able to now, Allison.
Okay, I, I just thought it might be helpful for the discussion. Um, sorry, I wasn't really prepared.
Is it just the elevation plan that's in the?
Yeah, that, that's all I was gonna do, is just-
Mike can do that, then.
Yeah. I just think it's helpful for the discussion.
So one of the things I'll, I'll ask, since it's come up, um, since the reason that the, the, the roof design is the way it is, is because of the rooftop mechanical. Are you married to rooftop mechanical?
I mean, I think that when you place them on the ground, you create a different set of problems and, uh, have more noise for adjacent property owners. I mean, I don't think they're any, you know, they're, they're not pretty, so.
But they get screened, so.
These are just, sounds like they're just AC. These aren't big air handlers or something.
No, they're HVAC, heat ventilation, air conditioning. So, Karen, they're like, probably three to five ton HVAC units, or roof shop units.
Can I see, Tom, was your, is that a new hand, Tom?
Uh, yes, it is. Uh, yeah, nobody, nobody does ground mounted, um, oh, am I, am I muted here?
No, you're good.
So you, you can hear you.
Nobody does ground mounted, uh, mechanical units for a shopping center. It, it has nothing to do with the screening. It has to do with the massing of the building in general, and, and, and I, I, uh, I, I'm concerned with planning commissioners think that we can like push and pull a design and come up with something better, uh, than the architect. That, that's not how this is gonna work. It isn't the roof, it's not, you know, a chunk of something here or there. If we don't like the design, we should say something and ask for another try. Um, but it, it, we, we, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, you know, come up with a better design for the applicant during this meeting, and that shouldn't be our goal. Um, the, the small rooftop units are not gonna be visible on this thing, whether there's a piece of roof there or not. They're gonna be towards the back of the building, and nobody's gonna see them, and they can easily prove that if they need to.
Does this sheet sense? Does this sheet work? Can everyone see the rendering sheet that's on?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Did you want the sheet, Allison, or the elevation sheet?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think this is fine. I just think it helps. It just helps.
I, I think, again, I mean, I'm looking for plans, so it sounds like, um, if, you know, trying to focus issues down here a little bit more, um, I mean, we're obviously discussing the, the, the architectural standards, and it, it seems like, uh, we haven't heard a lot of discussion regarding the waivers, uh, the site plan items, so, I mean, uh, assuming that we don't hear a lot of discussion, those, those may be okay, and then we can focus on the architectural, but I do kind of agree with Tom, it, that I, I don't know how much we, I think we need to maybe make a, give some feedback here tonight, and then either let the applicant, I don't know how much we can redesign it on the fly, because we're all saying somewhat different things, so, um, yeah, I'm, I'm concerned about kind of redesigning it on the fly as well, uh, that I don't know how productive that may be. Uh, we've got some, I think we made progress on some issues, but, um, I'm not sure about the others. Or about really this main issue of the compatibility within the corridor. Uh, so yes, Kyle, did you want to say something?
Well, I, I think that everyone who's offering suggestions on helping with the design are the same people, so they kind of like the design. I mean, Tom said he hated it, and he says he has nothing to say about it, so take that with a grain of salt, everyone.
We have to weigh it all, so.
I get it, you know, I get it.
All the input, yep, it's, it, that's, that's our job. Um, so again, Michelle did state that, that the standards are a little more strict here, where it says it shall. Um, so, again, um, in the interest of time here, do we have everybody, oh yeah, Mr. Carty now has, ha- uh, raised a hand up again, and then, um, if somebody wants to start thinking through either kind of a motion or something to give the petitioner some kind of action either way on this, um, that may be a good idea. Yes, Mr. Carty?
Well, you know, I think it's very telling that no one wants to make a motion. No one wants to be the person to say, yeah, this is good enough, but at the same time, no one wants to be the person to say it's not good enough, because these are nice people and they tried, and that's difficult. Um, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to table it and have them bring it back to us, if that's acceptable. And if it gets a second, it gets a second, and we can discuss it, and if it doesn't get a second, then somebody else can make a motion.
Okay, so would you move, uh, to postpone or to table? I think maybe postpone.
Postpone is what I mean.
You, that, would you put out a date, perhaps an August, uh, meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so, I didn't want to make your motion for you, but it sounds like, so you're making a motion to postpone to the August meeting? Uh, uh, I'm sorry, Tom, I was talking, was that support?
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, Matt, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, you're fine, but I just, was that support?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so now we have a motion. So, uh, we have moved Carty, we have support Phillips. This motion would be to postpone to the August meeting. Um, additional discussion here, uh, let's give this, if this motion is to succeed, let's try and give this applicant as much possible feedback that we can give them on that. Um, so I'm looking, uh, for additional comment. We got a lot of hands popping up here, so let me go first to Michelle. Uh, and then maybe down the, uh, Chad Hill, and then maybe Karen Roberts. So, Michelle?
Okay, so, I, I know that there's a motion for postpone. Um, if that is something that ends up going forward, um, it would probably be very helpful for the applicant if you went through the other waivers determinations and made um, actual decisions on those. Okay?
Yes. So, um, okay, so we, we will get, um, let me think if those would be combined.
Well, Matt, it's Jim. Since it's my motion, I'll just say that I'm fine with everything the applicant's asking for. I don't have an issue with the rest of the stuff. I just think the building does not fit in the corridor right now.
Okay, all right.
I agree with that.
Okay, so we have, so the motion, I, again, I mean, right now, this motion be postponed, and it, it's indicated through, uh, Jim's uh, motion, again, and, and, uh, Mr. Phillips' support, that this would be a motion to postpone for August with support of the seven determinations, which are the waivers regarding the parking and landscaping. We can read those in detail. Um, the eighth determination that we would need to make tonight is really the reason for the postponement, which would be the, uh, compatibility with the Ann Arbor Road, uh, corridor standards. So right now, again, uh, motion postponed with, uh, approving seven of the, the waivers that I requested tonight. So, um, what, Mr. Hill, oh, you had your hand up, Chad, did it disappear? Did I wait too long?
Um, yeah, wait a minute, all of a sudden I've lost everybody here.
We can hear you.
Okay, well, somewhere, you went somewhere, but anyway.
You can hear you.
Yeah, I lowered my hand because that's exactly what I was gonna say, that, uh, there seems to be one issue here, and it's the building. Everybody seems to be pretty happy with everything else. Um, you know, there are minor suggestions relative to, in my opinion, minor suggestions relative to a few things, but on the whole, um, it's really the building. So, if there's some way that we can make this motion to direct the applicant to, um, address the building issues, uh, to the extent that they can. Um, I think that's what we should do.
Okay, and that sounds like what, what the motion, well, that is what the motion would do at this time, so really would give that, that direction, so, um, uh, Juan Hubbard, I know your hand is up.
Yeah, thanks. I, you know, I also am in agreement with all this, and I'm fine with all the waivers. I just wanted to make sure that within those, we had discussed at one point with the landscaping, the ability to work with staff on choosing different things than are what, than what are outlined here.
Appropriate species, correct.
Amend for, or do you think about?
Uh, I agree.
All right, uh, Jim Carty, so, so we had mentioned, um, again, that staff working with that, if, if we want to throw that as part of the motion?
Correct, that's, that was my per- that was my perception as well, and, and good point by Juan. I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear.
Oh, that, that, that's fine. No, good, okay, so we had, uh, we will include that as well. Thank you, Juan. Um, okay, additional, uh, feedback, so again, here, really, I mean, I, I think, um, uh, hopefully, we've gotten some direction to the petitioner. I mean, architecturally, that, that's, I, I don't know how much you have there, but you can obviously hear that's a concern, um, for those in our roads, uh, corridor standards. Uh, additional feedback, other planning commissioners, at this time, we do have a motion on the floor, which would be, um, the, uh, you know, sorry, the move to postpone, uh, with the acceptance of the seven waivers. I know the petitioner does have their, their hand up at this time. I, I guess we could call on them briefly if they would like to make a comment, if that's okay with the commission, and so, um, it's not necessarily a public comment, but if you would like to add a comment, you can do so. Are you erotica? Either one? Ah, there they are.
Yes, we do appreciate your time and feedback on this. We do really love the design that we came up with. I know that, um, there's certain things that, um, sometimes we cannot think through, but overall, we did listen to every aspects of comments that you provided. Um, you have to keep in mind, we are small business owners. We really don't have ability to, uh, uh, keep changing things, um, that negatively impacts our ability to grow in Dexter. So, keeping that in mind, we don't mind.
It's more, uh, almost like a little financial burden of going through the whole process over again, because we only have a limited amount of finances to work with, so.
That consideration, we, we have taken practically, looking back from May to now, we have taken every aspect of your suggestions and put it into, on the paper. Um, honestly, we did, this is our dream to expand, and that kind of puts a big dent to it. Um, just thinking through, I mean, this is our first project, we already down to like, instead of hiring five people, seven people, we might have to cut back and not hire as many, and kind of think different ways to expand. Um, but this is our dream, and, um, it really is anyways, putting a dent to it by, uh, um, not only through postponements, but having a negative, uh, extremely negative, um, the heart and mind in the design itself, so that's the blue awnings, the gray awnings, kind of trying to blend into ARC in our bird, because we love texture.
So we even tried to pick colors of stone and brick so that it matches with the surrounding, even though it may have not been our first choice of brick and stone, but we wanted to go with the beige theme of the surrounding location versus going with a gray thing that might have stood out a lot more than what it would if it is a beige color theme. So, we took all that into account, so I think there is a pitch to it, whether a high pitch or a low pitch, we tried to incorporate it in what a commercial space may look like um, in our minds at least, so.
Uh, thank you. We, we do appreciate that. We know it's, it's a, it's a, it can be a process, so, uh, we do appreciate your patience, and I know it's always, it's probably doesn't necessarily seem straightforward to you, but we're, we try to do our jobs the best we can here, so with everybody's feedback, but we do appreciate your commitment to the city, and, um, uh, and again, going through this process in the, in the project, so I think many things have changed for the better on this. Um, so hopefully, we guys can get you a, uh, we'll get you a great project at the end of the day. Um, so with that, um, are there additional planning commissioner comments, questions?
Uh, Matt, it's Jim again.
Yes, sir.
Jim, well, one of, one of the advantages of being in the car is that I, you know, I, I'm in Dexter now, and I drove up and down the corridor while we're talking, and I mean, I don't think this corridor requires any strict compliance. There's a variety of styles in it, but this is, does not fit any of them, and I think that we have a responsibility, particularly with that use of the word shall, to try and make sure that new projects in the corridor fit the corridor, and there's nothing like this building, and that's, that's the bottom line, and I think anybody who drives up and down the corridor can see that. I don't, I don't think it's cookie cutter. I, there are, there's a lot of variation within the corridor, but there's nothing like this. I don't, I don't think it's cookie cutter, I, they're all, there's a lot of variation within the corridor, but there's nothing like this.
Okay, that's, I, thank you, Jim, um. Okay, I guess, I know A- Allison Bishop has her hand up again, I guess if it's something quick to add to it, otherwise we do have a motion, so.
I I guess, I'm just curious, just so that we have direction on if if, is the roof line the biggest hangup? I guess, because we we kind of have to, you know, we're
Oh, I would say no.
The needle in a haystack.
So, I think, so, yeah, additional, I know we've heard a couple of things from different people, but Tom, I mean, Tom in O'Kyle, others had some things to add to that, uh, Chad, Tom, did you wanna add anything?
Yeah, sure, I would, I would say that, you know, it looks like whoever drew this has never been to Dexter to me. And and I I don't think it's, no, it's not the roof line, it it's the, it's the composition of the design itself is not good. And and the, and the planning commission doesn't like it, and so somebody's gotta go out there and take a look at what the area looks like and come up with something that fits with the community. There isn't gonna be like a a color or a thing or a piece of brick that's gonna fix this thing. Somebody's gotta like, put some work into it, that's, that's what I, that's my two cents.
Other additional, um, comments, planning commissioners, uh, that have, uh, design element, uh, suggestion?
Matt, it's, Matt, it's Jim again, I'll just echo, I'll just echo Tom, I I, it's not one thing. Um, and I think, Tom, to I, the feelings Tom expressed are the same feelings I have.
A little bit of, uh,
No.
Mike, uh, Chad, Israel, do you have a comment?
I'm not an architect. Um, but to ask the petitioner to start over, which is basically what it sounds like, um, planning commissioners are expecting, I think is a a bit much, um. I think this building can be made, um, in its configuration to fit within the, um, confines, I guess is the best way to put it, of the, um, the intent of the ordinance. Um, it may not be the most spectacular building in the world when it gets done, but it certainly could be, w- without starting over, like as they say, can be made to fit the character of the corridor. Um, and I'm not sure what I'm saying, I'm not an architect, but I I disagree with the idea that 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 it needs, basically needs to start over and show us something totally different, I don't, I disagree with that entirely. Um, the roof may not be the main issue, it's one of the, um, it's one of the issues. But that's what's drawn everybody's attention here, basically, um, at this meeting, is how this building looks from the street. So, from my perspective, um, I give some direction. I suggest that the architect take a close look, has heard everything we've talked about, and see what the, with the, um, um, imagination and the design, design skills he has, if he can roll out something that he thinks will satisfy us, and I don't have some, I understand, I'm not an architect, I don't have any real suggestion. Uh, but I suspect Mr. Kerr, um, probably has some other ideas that he's willing to throw on the table, see if that flies. Um, and, so I'm not sure if that's the direction Allison you you were asking for, but, um, but, but something, you know, something less than starting over and and redesigning that building is certainly in my mind, will work for what it's worth.
Um, Mike, I I know you had your hand up.
Oh, I just wanted to add real quick, understanding that it can be very challenging to give the, the specific, uh, suggestions, um, that Allison asked for, and I think everyone's trying to deliver, but just to hopefully pr- provide some structure, the, um, the language from the overlay district standards are, uh, proper relationship to existing structures in the area shall be maintained through building mass proportion, scale, roof line shapes, windows and doors. That variety in building design shall be provided by architectural feature, features, details and ornaments such as archways, colonnades, towers, cornices, or peach roof lines. I believe that someone had mentioned earlier, uh, eaves is a suggestion, and again, I know those items aren't necessarily ter- are terribly speci- specific either. There is also provision in that section does say that, um, all mechanical equipment shall be shielded from public view. So again, I'm just, uh, adding that, uh, hopefully it sparks some ideas for specific direction or feedback to provide.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mike, um, Karen, I, I thought it was Karen Roberts.
Yeah, I think I'm just gonna repeat people, I don't think they should go back to scratch, I really don't, I, that's just too expensive, and, um, I think the notion is that the profile of, you know, of what it, what we see needs to, to be a little more pleasing. Um, you know, really, we've got a pretty flat terrain, I mean, buildings there, they, um, I just looked at the picture of seven, four, four Dexter Ann Arbor, and they did a nice job without making it look like a tower to create sort of, you know, a kind of decorative sort of, I don't know what, I don't know these words, parapet, if that's the right word, but I don't know, so something like that, rather than putting a little hat on it, I just don't think that did any, did them any favors. Um, and, you know, design wise, and, um, so, but I, you know, everything else should stick, the the entryway, that's good. The window sizes, looks to me like that's good, um. The, you know, I don't know about the layout, but I, you know, I don't feel like they, this should be junked at all, I just think the profile of it needs to look a little more consistent with what's around it, because it is now, it would just, it's, it's gonna stand out.
Thank you, Karen, um, Tom, Mr. Phillips, you have your hand up again? You might be muted, maybe not, no, I can't hear you.
Yeah, sorry about that, I was muted, I just wanna say that I didn't say anything about starting over, and I don't think anybody else did at all. But I don't think just because somebody throws something in front of us, that makes it good, because it's inconvenient to make it better or to make it good, you know, it's good enough because it's here. That, that's not how this works, or how it should work, or or should, that we need to feel sorry for a design, a bad design and the trouble that causes the applicant. That's why we're here, a- and we can't put a plaque on the building and say, sorry, this looks terrible, but it went through really quick and it was inexpensive. So, nobody said start over.
Okay, thank, um, all right, any other thoughts on this? We've got a lot, I mean, I think we don't really have too much to add for the architectural elements, so, um, I, I'm looking for additional feedback, um. We do have that motion, if we don't hear anything else, then we'll go, have to go ahead and take a vote on that motion, which, uh, Mr. Cardy and uh, I forgot who seconded that, I think it was Mr. Hill.
Oh, Tom Phillips.
Yes, all right, Tom, okay, um. Additional discussion, last chance, well, until August, um, if this motion passes.
Hmm.
Uh, okay, with that, then I think at this time, Carol, can we have a roll call vote, please? The motion would be to postpone to the August meeting.
Hill.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Healy.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Cardy.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes. Okay, um, so that will be postponed to the August meeting. Um, okay, thank you, um, so, moving along, item eleven, which would be the proposed business for the Tuesday, uh, sorry, that would
Monday, August second.
All right, Monday, that dates, you know, the thing, to the Monday, August, I'm sorry, what's the date?
I think it's the second, if I'm not mistaken, Matt.
August second, okay, um, so Millennium, Millennial, Millennium Place will be back?
Yeah.
That's been a while, right?
Yep, but they came in just in time, so.
Okay, perfect, good, so, um, uh, discussion.
Um, the, just so you know, the, the, the issue or the challenge that delayed them coming in sooner was the fire department the requirement for the thirteen point six clearance. Um, there was a meeting with, uh, uh, chief and staff and, um, uh, and others, uh, back in December of last year, and, um, it, excuse me, uh, the chief did go back and relook at, um, why three fire apparatus access lanes would be needed. What he came up with was that at a minimum, the clearance should be the same as the clearance for the railroad bridge over Island Lake Road, so at, before you go by Westbridge. So, the applicant met that, so instead of the, what was originally proposed as ten feet, six inches, is now ten feet, nine inches, and, um, that should address the major hurdle, so.
Good, okay.
Okay.
Good, all right, that's, that's, um.
Chief.
Discussion regarding Second Street, so I guess with that, is that a redesign?
No, is Second Street is, it's the issue about, you know, do you want to either move up that that portion of, um, addressing how that corridor looks, that sort of plan for it, do you think that we need to go back and relook at that particular, um, classification in the master plan? Um, it's just an open discussion, um, and like I said at the beginning, um, excuse me, this was actually something that you had asked for to be on the July meeting, um, and, like I said, uh, staff needs some time to really think about how to present this and provide the structure you need to have a productive discussion, so, um, with your indulgence, if we don't get there for your August meeting, um, we'll come back for September, okay?
Yeah, that's okay, I don't think it's very, okay, I mean, it's not a rush, but I appreciate you adding that, and a- again, for all the commissioners that haven't, I mean, walk up and down Second Street, and so, because this will be our issue, and, um, so, yeah, uh, take a good look at it, um. Okay, uh, zoning ordinance, again, we'll have a a subcommittee, again, remember, we have our, uh, homework assignment, besides walking Second Street, would be to get our comments to Megan by next Monday. Um, and then we'll probably have a nice summary of that, and again, a a good discussion, the, uh, of, in August, uh, with that subcommittee report again. So, uh, also, uh, it looks like we'll, uh, have this site plan back, the care to care for the August meeting. So, that looks like it for that agenda, with that, um, item twelve is citizens wishing to address the commission, so.
Of officers, Matt.
Well, I'm sorry, what's that?
Forgot, election of officers?
Oh, yes, yes, thank you, Karen, yes, so next month, the election of officers, correct, so again, think through that, um. Anybody wants to be any position, I'm sure none of us take offense at it, you can, anybody wants to be chair, let me know, and I will give you all the glorious details of it, so, I honestly am, am open for ideas, so if anybody wants, again, people wanna move around positions, I do not take offense, so please, everybody take your, um, thoughts through that, again, we do need that secretary position, so that is one we need filled no matter what, so. Um, okay, so thank you, Karen, for adding that, okay, so now, item twelve, citizens wishing to address the commission. I will look to the participant list, so if anybody is online, it looks like we have all our commissioners and the other public raise their hand.
Yes, Matt.
Thank no one, all right, well, with that, we come to item thirteen, lucky thirteen, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, Mr. Cardy, are you home yet, by the way, Jim?
I am, I'm in my
All right, move Cardy, is there support?
Or?
I didn't hear the
Kyle Marsh.
Okay, support, uh, Kyle, I don't think we need a roll call this week, Carol?
Nope.
Okay, that's not an action item, okay, all right, um, so, uh, with that, all in favor of adjournment, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Done, okay, meeting is adjourned, thank you all, thank you all.
Have a good evening.
Everybody.
Good evening, good week.
Thank you.